Good evening. This is Thursday, September 17th, 2020. Welcome to the Carver County Commissioner Candidates Town Hall Forum. Before we begin, let's recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening. To those of you that are watching this Town Hall Forum via live feed, we're happy to have you here. Also, I want to say a special thanks to the four county commissioner candidates who have agreed to participate in tonight's forum. Allow me to introduce you to them at this time. First of all, the two candidates for District Five, Mark Willams...
Hello?
...and John Fahey.
Good evening.
And the two candidates for District Three, Matt Udoman...
Hello?
...and Randy Maluchnick.
Hey, folks.
I'm Denny Loffenberger, and I will serve as moderator for tonight's forum. Joining me here at the officials' table, former Carver County Sheriff Jim Olson, who will act as time enforcement officer for this event. In just a few moments, we'll begin our forum with opening statements from each of the candidates in a sequence determined earlier this month. After the opening statements, I will ask a series of questions taken from input by email from more than two dozen residents of Carver County. Now, we won't be able to ask every question that was submitted, but those of you that are watching and did submit questions, you may hear yours asked this evening. The sequence of responses for tonight's forum has been provided to the candidates ahead of time, but the questions have not. To remove any unintended partiality on the questions, I'll ask the candidate who is to answer first to choose a number one through nine, and that is the question that I will ask during that round. Following the questions, we'll hear closing statements from each candidate. At the conclusion, the forum will be posted as a recording on the same website at which you are watching this live feed. Just a reminder to the candidates, you will have a minute and a half for your statements and for your answers, and Sheriff Olson has signs reflecting 30 seconds remaining, 15 seconds remaining, and then a stop. Please respect the other candidates by responding within your allotted time. So with that, let's begin with our opening statements, starting with Randy Maluchnick.
Thank you, Denny. I want to thank you for sitting in this time around since the League of Women Voters weren't able to do that, and I sure do miss them, but I know that you'll meet the challenge. This commissioner race in the third district is simply a matter of experience. Does experience matter when we're entered into uncharted waters like we did in 2008 during the Great Recession? We mean, when I say "we," I mean all of Carver County, rose and met the challenge then, and together, we're going to do it again this time. There's no secret, the Maluchnick family has chosen the good work of a public servant for our vocation. Both my wife and I, my wife is a public school teacher for 30 years, we learned both of us at a young age that public service is a noble profession. It means commitment to the people that you serve. I have been a public servant since leaving active military duty. Before entering active duty, I was successful in the private sector, running or owning several businesses where I made payroll, paid business taxes, and did what people usually do when they run a Main Street business venture. Thank you. That concludes my opening remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Maluchnick. Next up, Matt Udoman.
You. I'm running for you. As are signs, posts, chat with Matt events, and interaction support, this election isn't about me, it's about you. You, the collective stakeholders and taxpayers saddled with the highest taxes in the state; you, the business owner frustrated with unnecessary layers of government; you, the 700-plus county employees who may feel, not feel valued, heard, or empowered; you, the 11% of Carver County living below the double poverty line, barely making ends meet, who doesn't much care about the healthiest or happiest or most affluent county because that isn't your reality; you, the 1 in 5 suffering from mental health or mental illness; you, the 40% of parents with school-aged children navigating childcare, schools, and distance learning; you, the 35% of residents new to Carver County in the last 15 years; you, the folks who believe we need fresh ideas against a backdrop of an average of 25-plus years in politics of the current commission; you, the underrepresented or unrepresented stakeholders of Carver County. Our "you matter" message is grounded in three pillars. Number one, people matter. We believe people should come before politics. Number two, community matters. We believe you should be able to live here a lifetime, so choose. And three, finances matter. We believe smart dimes beat dumb dollars, and we need to do a smarter job of spending your tax dollars. There's no shortage of partisan politics, division smears, myth truths, but there is a shortage of next-generation leaders needed to lead our future of our county. Leaders stand up, they show up, and they speak up, not just the two months before an election. The current county board has been unchanged since 2006. If you believe this election should be about you, and if you believe a balanced board is a better board, join in voting for Matt for Carver County Commission, District Three.
Thank you. Next, Mark Willams.
All right, thank you. Hi, my name is Mark Willams, and I want to represent District Five as your next county Carver Commissioner. First of all, I want to thank Denny and Sheriff Olson for moderating this event, the county for hosting, and my fellow candidates for participating. Public speaking is not my strong suit, but I'm not running for county commissioner to make speeches. I'm running to work for the people of Carver County. It's hard to list all my qualifications and experiences in just 90 seconds, so for that information, please go to my Facebook page and my website. I would like to tell you why I'm running for county commissioner. I grew up in Cologne. It was a great place to live, and I want to do my part to keep Carver County a great place to work and live. Part of that is protecting our rich farm heritage while still allowing the cities to grow and expand our economic base. While I have thoroughly enjoyed being on the Dogren Township Board for the past 12 years, it is time for me to serve more people. While Carver County government is not directly involved with our great schools, hospitals, or private industry, we need to make sure we support them by having good roads, a strong sheriff's department, reasonable property taxes, and regulations that favor growth and prosperity for all. I have been very involved over the last 12 years on many boards and committees. I've been promoted to leadership on virtually every board I've served on. The firsthand knowledge and experience that I bring to service as an ex-Carver County Commissioner in District Five is unparalleled. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willams. Next, John Fahey.
Thank you, Denny. My name is John Fahey, and I'm running for Carver County Commissioner, District Five. As a lifelong Carver County citizen and a resident from Norwood Young America, I'm running because I'd like to continue to serve like I have on the numerous levels for the past 30 years. As a former school board member in District 108 and a former mayor of Norwood Young America, I feel I have the leadership skills and the ability to understand complex budgets. The county budget is estimated at to be about $171 million. That is a lot of money, folks. I've served on the county's park board, I've served on the Board of Adjustments, I'm currently the Chair of the Carver County Planning Commission, and I also serve on the CDA. I'm also serving currently on the NYA Planning Commission. I graduated from Central High School out in Norwood Young America, I received my Bachelor of Science degree from St. John's University, and I completed my MBA in Business Administration from the University of St. Thomas. I've been working in the banking industry for the last 17 years, and I currently am a Vice President Commercial Lender. My wife, Janet, and I, we're also small business owners, and we have two adult sons who are both attending to the U of M. I hope to earn your vote on November 3rd. Thank you.
Thanks to each of you. Now, question number one, Mr. Fahey, you get your choice of question number one. Choose a number one through nine.
I'll take number one, Denny, please.
All right, number one. Commissioner role and responsibility. Someone has suggested that the role of county commissioner is not well-understood by the public in Carver County. Can each of you describe what you believe the role of a county commissioner is, and how you are prepared and equipped to perform that role of leadership in your district for the next four years? You have a minute and a half, each of you. Mr. Fahey, you begin.
Thank you, Denny. I think the role of the county commissioner is for someone to really listen to the citizens, to be able to carry their voice to the county. The county is faced with a lot of challenging issues, and also, the budget is very complex. As a county commissioner, you have to be able to do your due diligence, you have to be able to understand all the different departments, understand the personnel part of it, the benefit piece of it. And I think for a commissioner from District Five, we have to really understand the agriculture part of District Five, and then also be able to connect with all of the current city leaders. I think as a commissioner, you have to be able to carry that voice, bring that message back to Chaska, and together, we can manage the change. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, Mr. Willams, would you like the question repeated?
Please.
Okay. Someone has suggested that the role of the county commissioner is not well-understood by the public in Carver County. Can you describe what you believe the role of a county commissioner is, and how you are prepared and equipped to perform that role of leadership in your district for the next four years?
Okay, thank you. I believe, well, part of the, one of the biggest roles for county commissioners is setting the budget, and that is to make sure the different departments, whether it be the Sheriff's Department, Transportation, you know, the Highway Department, Social Services gets the adequate funding that they need, and then also, not only after they get that funding, to make, to be a watchdog, to make sure that funding is being spent properly and efficiently. Well, I don't think it's a role of a county commissioner to get involved with the day-to-day operations of the workings of the county. I think they do need to have an active role in making sure that the employees have what they need to do their job properly. And so that's one of them, and I believe with my experience on not only the Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment, I believe I have a working knowledge of a large part of, of the county government already, and I know a lot of the people, and I believe that will serve me well as accounting commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Udoman, you're next. Would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
Someone has suggested that the role of the county commissioner is not well-understood by the public in Carver County. Can you describe what you believe the role of a county commissioner is, and how you are prepared and equipped to perform that role of leadership in your district for the next four years?
It amazes me when I go out and meet with people in the community, whether it's our chat with Matt conversations, or whether it's door-to-door, that fewer than 3% of people know what a commission does, and fewer than 3% of people actually know who their current commissioner is. So I explain to people the roughly 70, $170 million budget, about half of that is made up through your property taxes. And if we take that 170 million, about a third of it's physical infrastructure, things like roads and bridges, clearing and maintaining them and building them, but a third of it's probably close to the social infrastructure, things like food stamps, things like mental health and other things that are a little bit softer that we put on the social infrastructure, and about a third of it's administration. If you call 911 and you get dispatched, that's Carver County, the operation of the library, the operation of elections, the operation of your taxes if you want to challenge or get a variance. And so, in, in response to that, what does a commissioner do that aligns with my three pillars. One, people matter. I think our role is to empower our staff and then get out of their way. And empowering those staff members, I think that we need to cast clear vision and have clear values and have high standards. Number two is community matters. I think that the relationships are absolutely pinnacle. You'll see me at City of Victoria meetings, City of Chaska meetings, City Council meetings, as well as District 112 meetings and other meetings, because I think those relationships, along with relationship with not-for-profits, churches, individuals, and civic organizations are pertinent. And the third thing I talk about is finance matters. We've got to do a smarter job of spending your taxes, and I think that includes focusing on a business population, because about every dollar spent by an individual, a business will carry $3.3 and a half dollars worth from a, from a tax standpoint. So people matter, community matter, and finance matters.
Mr. Udoman. Next, Mr. Maluchnick, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I think I have it. Thank you, Denny. First of all, you're right, not many people know what a county commissioner does. It's kind of a ghost government, if you will. I had one person describe it one time, as, as you start finding out what a commissioner does, it's like peeling away an onion. But the first and foremost duty of a locally-elected public official is public safety, so you've got to make sure that the roads are fine and maintained and well-kept, and the bridges are there, and you have to make sure that the emergency services and our FEMA folks are there to make sure that those emergencies do not turn into disasters. And you have to before, because you're a agent of the federal and state government, great partners they can be, sometimes troublesome partners, but you have to ensure that their programs are administered or delivered properly, effectively, in the best service model delivery system possible. And what I'd like to say is I've always been successful in public service, and first in the military, and serving with Congressman Mingi as a military and veterans liaison, taking care of our men and women in the service and their families, then at the Veterans Administration as a veteran service officer, then as a city council member in, in the city of Chaska, and now as your county commissioner. And that'll complete my, my answer. Denny, thank you.
All right, thank you. Question two, Mr. Willams, you are the first responder, so choose a number two through nine.
Four.
During the past few months, we have heard, heard an increasing call from all segments of our society that decades and centuries of systemic racism and social injustice must end. What role does Carver County have in addressing the issues of racial and ethnic disparity in law enforcement, housing, employment, education, and other areas that contribute to quality of life? And what is your personal role in this action?
All right, thank you. Well, these last few months have been trying times for the whole country. Some cities have had more problems than others. I believe Carver County's role in that is to ensure that every citizen, no matter what their background, what their race is, religion, anything like that, their gender, that should not be a factor in any decision that the county makes. I believe everybody was created equal, and they deserve to be treated equally. Part of, you know, part of the problem with, with the riots here is I think we are, the past has been, you know, we've started to forget our history and, and things like that. I don't believe that there is systemic racism here in Carver County, because by that definition, that means every time somebody like me or anybody gets out of bed in the morning, that they think how they can hurt somebody. That is absolutely not the case. So like I said, it, and I agree with Commissioner Maluchnick, the first role of government is to protect their citizens, so I want to make sure that Carver County Sheriff's Department too, we don't have these racial issues with the public. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Maluchnick, would you like me to repeat the question?
I want to make sure I get all the, all the criteria, so, Denny, can I get it? So I have housing, employment, law enforcement, what's the other one?
I'm going to read the whole question.
Go ahead, please.
During the past few months, we have heard an increasing call from all segments of our society that decades and centuries of systemic racism and social injustice must end. What role does Carver County have in addressing the issues of racial and ethnic disparity in law enforcement, housing, employment, education, and other areas that contribute to quality of life? And what is your personal role in this action?
All right, thank you very much, and I, in many of those categories that you mentioned, I do have a personal investment. First of all, you're absolutely right, this has got to stop. I, I remember doing protesting in 1970s, and I thought this was all going to be over by now, but it seems like it's worse than it was then, and, and first of all, with housing, we need more low-income and affordable housing, and we've got to promote and do that. People can't go out and get a job unless they have housing, and we used to do that the other way around, and we found out that doesn't work. Second of all, in employment, we have to enhance, and I've been a champion of that, the Career Force Center, and we've been reaching out to folks of all backgrounds and trying to get them matched up with the employers, which seems to be a problem, a recent problem here in Carver County, that we just can't seem to get the right people matched up with the right employers. And with law enforcement, I supported the sheriff, and the sheriff here knows and other sheriffs that we, the training for inequity and treating people right, the de-escalation that needs to go on, that's important. In education, of course, we wanted to make sure that the kids all have nourishment, so with a SHIP program, and working with the school district, and with their health councils in each little school, we're working to make sure that they have good health, good nutrition, that helps them learn, and that can hopefully close the learning gap. So, thank you. That's my answer.
All right. Mr. Fahey, would you like me to repeat the question?
Please, Denny.
During the past few months, we have heard an increasing call from all segments of our society that decades and centuries of systemic racism and social injustice must end. What role does Carver County have in addressing the issues of racial and ethnic disparity in law enforcement, housing, employment, education, and other areas that contribute to quality of life? And what is your personal role in this action?
Thank you, Denny. With the county, and more importantly, the Sheriff's Department within the county, the mission there is to serve everyone with respect and dignity, and to do this with honor, integrity, and pride. And I think that statement says a lot, and it's very important for all of us in this room and within the county to treat everyone with respect. I personally don't believe that there is a lot of racism within Carver County. I also serve on the CDA Board where we address the housing concerns. The CDA Board is playing a very important factor or role to provide housing to everyone within the county. Currently, there are numerous people that are homeless within the county. We need to address those needs, and we need to provide the services for that. We can educate, continue to educate. I think the county does a spectacular job with mental health and mental services to support the education and to definitely help those in need. As a county commissioner, I will continue to support those services that the county currently provides. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Udoman, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I'm good, but I, I don't know if it's possible or not, but Randy has the distinct privilege of having been our commissioner for 14 years, and I guess I didn't hear how you've actually done anything.
Address your answer to the cameras, man, please.
Yeah, I just haven't, I, I would like to lend my time back to Randy, because I didn't hear how he's done anything in the last 14 years to address those things.
Okay, are you, is that the conclusion of your answer?
No, I'll just lend my time, and if there's any time left, I'll answer it.
Okay, did you have anything else that you wanted to say, Mr. Maluchnick?
Well, if he wants to talk about the increase in affordable housing that we've had in Carver County, it's, it's doubled or tripled, it's tripled since, since I've become a commissioner. The affordable housing, the low-income housing has increased, the veterans transitional housing, we just developed last year, and we made that happen. You want to know more about the housing?
No, I, I guess my question is, what have you done? I've heard a lot of...
Mr. Udoman, I would ask that you respond to this question, please.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, we don't want to go with that?
No, respond to this question.
He doesn't like to play by the rules, Denny.
Enough. Respond to the question with your time remaining.
You bet. So I think it's a values issue. I think it's about human rights and dignity, and I think it's not just a race issue. I think it's people living in the shadows that might be disabled. I think it's people that are older that are caught in the shadows, and I think that systematic racism does exist. And I ask the question is, why are we talking about it now when we have a commissioner that's, that's been here for 14 years? Why is, the last conversation that I had with the head of HR for Carver County say that there's only 1% and, 1 person at the manager level above that is a person of color? We have got to focus on these areas. We have to be in proximity with people, we have to create a culture that lends itself to being able to solve these problems, we have to address the 250 homeless people, and I think we do that with not-for-profit civic organizations, places of faith, individuals, and foundations to accelerate the work that has not been done at the county to date.
Thank you, Mr. Udoman. Question number three, Mr. Udoman, this is your choice.
We're going to go with two, because we've got two little kids at home.
This is transportation. In Carver County, as everywhere in Minnesota, transportation infrastructure is vital to commerce, education, and connecting our resources, people, goods, and services to our surrounding region. While the county has done reasonably well to maintain county roads, the federal and state seem to be behind in funding their responsibilities. The question, two parts. Should Carver County use local tax dollars to fund federal and state highways like 212, 41, and 5? Why or why not? And are there any county road projects that you would advocate for or against if you were commissioner? Mr. Udoman.
Yeah, I think the value is, it's a values question, is do we value transportation? What's the point of that transportation? The transportation is not only for our residents, but it's also to attract new businesses to this area, and we've got a gem of a road that Bob Lindell and Carol Mollnow and dozens of other people helped create. And having 212 is supposed to be a commerce artery, but we've not seen that commerce develop. We are the fastest-growing county in the state, and we've seen commerce grow, but not to the degree that we should with 212. We have been promised an extension to 212 of four lane, and we've not yet to realize that. We've seen building congestion on Highway 5 that has not been addressed, and I think that part of the solution with that is we need to work closely with municipalities, the cities, because there is funding. Federal dollars is pushing down to state, state is pushing to county, and county is pushing to cities, so there does need to be partnerships. But how far can we push it down? Because it's the same tax dollar, okay? It's the same people within Carver County that are going to be paying for these roads, so we need to have better relationships, and we have to push back. As far as county road projects, I mentioned a few of those already. 11 and 10 will be the arteries for the growth within Victoria. Most people don't know this, but Victoria in the next 50 years will be the largest city in the county, and it's troublesome because Victoria has relatively no commerce. And so we have got to be focused on that 11, and we have to be in partnership with the farmers and bridge the urban to the rural so that we can accelerate these for sizable business growth and planned business growth.
Thank you. Mr. Fahey, would you like me to repeat the question?
Please.
In Carver County, as everywhere in Minnesota, transportation infrastructure is vital to commerce, education, and connecting our resources, people, goods, and services to our surrounding region. While the county has done reasonably well to maintain county roads, the federal and state seem to be behind in funding their responsibilities. Should Carver County use local tax dollars to fund federal and state highways like 212, 41, and 5? Why or why not? And secondly, are there any county road projects that you would advocate for or against if you were commissioner?
Thank you, Denny. Yes, I think we do need to partner with the state and MinDOT, and I think we do need to spend local tax dollars to fund Highway 212 and possibly Highway 5. We need to make Highway 212 safe, safe not only for our daily residents, but also safety for our farmers. In District Five, in the rich agriculture district that that entails, the farmers continue to use Highway 212. And if we could make that a four-lane all the way from Carver all the way to NYA, that will play a big role and continue for our farmers to be able to get their field, or their crops out of the field. I would advocate that partnership. I would support reaching out to all the cities. We do need the commerce. It will help with the education aspect as we look on what's happened to the city of Cologne already and the city of NYA with the improvements of 212 just through to Carver. And the city of Carver has benefited tremendously. Currently, we have 276 miles of roads within Carver County. We need to work together. Thank you.
Mr. Maluchnick, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I think I have it. Thank you, Denny.
All right.
Absolutely, we have to put local money in. It's called feeder money, and the locals have to put in it, or you don't get the attention of the state or the feds. As far as 41, I was very proud to work with legislation and move it forward with a lot... As far as 41, I was very proud to work with legislation and move it forward with lobbyists and folks, actually some folks in this panel here, to get TED grants, which actually built the improvements on 41 this year. If we hadn't had, or last year, if we hadn't had TED program, which is Transportation Economic Development Program, those roads would not be improved. You'll be hearing probably next month that we're going to turn the shovel on 212 beginning next season, so that'll be spring of 2021. The reason we're not announcing right now is we're waiting in case there's a, there's a rumor of a special bonding session. We have some, a bill in that would take care of some of the Phase 1. Phase 1, of course, would be Carver to Cologne. So that's already in the Harper, ready to go. Mr. Lindell did a lot of work, Carol Mollnow made it a little tougher because of the way she did it. I would have done it her way too, but she didn't have time to recoup with the folks, the other local elected officials in town or in the state that didn't like the way that she did that. But anyway, we've managed to mend a lot of those partnerships and move on to finally get, getting 212 done. So that'll conclude my comments. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Williams, would you like me to repeat the question?
Oh, thank you.
Okay.
Um, you know, it's really, this really isn't even a question because unfortunately, the way the funding mechanisms work at both the state and federal level, the locals are actually forced to help out here. This, I have found out, I've been on the Southwest Transportation Coalition for the last few years, and I've learned a lot. Part of that is, even though we're a part of the metro out here, we are competing against Interstate 35, 494, 694. We compete against all those roads. And when it comes to safety, our scores are high, but when it comes to the volume of traffic, that's where we lose. And unfortunately, whether we want to or not, if we want to see 212 done, and I do because there's been way too many people getting hurt and killed on this road, unfortunately, we need to put in local dollars, or it's not going to happen. It's, it's just the reality of it all. That road has been scheduled to be four lanes from, since the 1940s. It's time to get it done. There's, it's one of the busiest semi-roads in the state. And, and as far as quickly on county roads, I think County Road 11 and County Road 10 are going to be projects that I would support expanding. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Before we go to question number four, and this will be your choice, Mr. Fahey, I would like to speak just briefly to those that are watching. I was, I was very pleased with the questions that came to the email address that I published with the, with the Villager and the Herald and the Norbert Young America Sun Patriot Times. And over two dozen people responded with questions, and in many cases, I combined a couple of questions together to form the questions that you're hearing tonight. So I just want to say thank you to you active involved citizens who sent me questions for this forum. All right, Mr. Fahey, you get question number four. Your choice is 3, 5, 6, 7, 8, or 9.
Number 3, please.
All right. Property taxes. Carver County collects the highest property tax in Minnesota, levying an average of $2,992 or 1.04% of median home value every year in property taxes. The county budget, well over $150 million, and with COVID-19, we may see shortfalls during the coming year. Outside of raising taxes to meet the shortfall, what other steps or priorities would you have to narrow the gap between revenue and expenses in the coming years?
Thank you, Denny. Yes, the property taxes do play a big role in the county budget. As we're looking forward to October 15th, there is a concern that there might be delinquent taxes, and that's going to stress the county some more. Overall, I do agree with you that they are the highest in the state, and some of the things that we can do to manage maybe the possible shortfalls or to have a 0% increase is look at the capital improvement projects. Those projects are put in the budget, they come forth from the different departments, and I think we might have an opportunity to take a hard look at that. There's also the replacement schedule. There has been a $100,000 increase in 2020 for replacement schedule. We can take another hard look at that and hopefully make some additional cuts. And then there's also the one-time projects. There's the bid, bridge replacements, body cameras, for example, the miscellaneous facilities, IT and public works. We can look at all of those, and hopefully we can make some adjustments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Udoman, would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
Okay. Carver County collects the highest property tax in Minnesota, levying an average of $2,992 or 1.04% of median home income, excuse me, medium, median home value every year in property taxes. The county budget is over $150 million, and with COVID-19, we may see shortfalls during the coming year. Outside of raising taxes to meet the shortfall, what other steps or priorities would you have to narrow the gap between revenue and expenses in the coming years?
Yeah, so thank you. I think one of the things that we have to recognize is where does that leadership come from? And when I was at Best Buy, we navigated the recessionary period, and I had a half-a-billion-dollar budget underneath my watch. We came out of that as a stronger team with better revenues and a great position because of a couple of things. Number one, we reinvested in our people. We assured the people that they were the future of this, and we asked them to tighten their belts, we asked them to come with creative solutions, we asked them to find places where there could be savings and efficiencies. So you might hear some talk about a net zero budget or things that will be proposed, that it's not going to cost a taxpayer any extra, but what you won't probably hear is these, these little pockets called vacancy savings. You won't hear these other pockets called deferred maintenance or deferred things. It doesn't mean these things go away. It just means it looks on paper as they're not great. And so one thing I wouldn't do is not reward employees that have had to take on the burden of fewer employees in more time. I was appointed by Randy Maluchnick and the board to be the chair of the Carver County Library Board, and when I took over, I said we need to be more connected and we need to have more access, but I also said we need to recession-proof our library. So unfortunately, we can't go back in time and say recession-proof because this is one of those, this is one of those times where we should have been prepared for it, we're kind of caught on our heels. But the answer is through empowering your staff. The answer is to find the gaps where we can employ the, the good working people of the county to step forward and find these areas. It's not to give them zero raises for people that are working extra hard during this period of time. Thank you.
Mr. Williams, your question, would you like me to repeat it?
Oh, thank you.
Okay.
Um, I think we'd be naive to think that there isn't going to be some, a financial impact with the, from the COVID here, but I think it's unfair to just say right now because we don't know what that shortfall is going to be. But the one thing I will say is, I think we have to be willing and honest and look at basically almost everything in the county. And I believe one place where, with just talking with people here during the campaign, I've, by accident, run into a lot of county employees, and I've heard many ideas from them saying, we could save money here or there. I think that's one of the first places you look, is the people that are actually doing the work. They're the ones that know where the money's spent, they know where there's cost savings to be had. I think we also will have to be looking at some of these long-term or these larger projects that, that may have to be deferred, but unfortunately, I don't think it's fair right now until we have a good handle on the actual shortfall to, to actually say what we're going to cut. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Maluchnick, would you like me to repeat the question?
I think I'm all right. Thank you, Denny. Mr. Williams is correct, we don't know exactly what's going to happen. The good news is that as far as folks paying their first half of their property tax, the number of folks or the amount of money was about where it was at, is traditionally at. So that's the good news, but we still don't know where we're going to be. So we've already instituted measures for next year. As we begin, many folks don't know, but the budgeting process begins in April for the, for the next year, and we've been working on that. So we've instituted your traditional things that worked so well in 2008, and that, of course, is a soft hiring freeze. You always look at capital improvements, and do they need to be done now or not? Replacement can sometimes be, be delayed. And that deferred maintenance that Mr. Udoman talked about, that's probably your worst option because what happens if you've ever run a business or a manufacturing operation, you know that deferred maintenance is going to cost you more money in the long run. So you want to try not to do that. So the action that we've already taken is that because of growth, the fantastic growth that Carver County is experiencing, is we're going to be able to raise the levy a little bit, and that's all going to be made up by growth. And then everybody else's or the medium average, average home is going to remain the same as taxes. So your taxes most likely will not go up next year, and if they do, if you're in the higher-end houses, it'll only be a few dollars. So we've already taken care of those.
Thank you. Mr. Maluchnick, you get question number five. Choose 5, 6, 7, 8, or 9.
Let's go for broke. We'll do 9.
So regarding law enforcement, there have been several suggestions over the last few years as to how Carver County Sheriff's Office law enforcement should be adjusted, such as body cameras, ride-along mental health co-responders, changes to training, monitoring the ethnic profiling of arrests. Are there some changes that you would advocate for as county commissioner? And if so, what are they? Mr. Maluchnick?
The two things that come out, and I spent some time researching this and visiting other places across the country, body cams is absolutely something we have to do right away. We talked about respecting people, and not only is body cam's important in being able to document or show de-escalation and respect, it also protects the safety of not only the, the person that's being involved with the law enforcement, but it also protects law enforcement. So it's something that has to be done. Co-responders, I was the first guy, the sheriff, Don't Say Nothing, was here when I called the first meeting to talk about co-responders, and I had visited two different programs throughout the country that were very successful. And they, these, these folks, we've had a case recently where a co-responder talked a person down, and it could definitely be a life-threatening situation, not only for the person, but also for the law enforcement people. And so those are the two big things that I think we could do more with. I think the training is going about right. Sheriff Camerud has used the right level and investing in training for equity and de-escalation and those kinds of things, and I have and will always support those efforts. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Williams, would you like me to repeat the question?
I would, please. Thank you.
There have been several suggestions over the last few years as to how Carver County Sheriff Office law enforcement should be adjusted, such as body cameras, ride-along mental health co-responders, changes to training, monitoring the ethnic profiling of arrests. Are there some changes that you would advocate for as county commissioner? What are they?
Okay, thank you. As far as body cams, I, I believe they are a useful tool for not only the sheriff's department, you know, to protect the sheriff's department, but also to protect the public from possible abuse by deputies. The one thing that does concern me about the body cams, though, is the data storage. It can be very, very expensive, and I think that's something that we, we need to look at before we go full-on into body cams. We need to get that data storage figured out. As far as the co-responders, I think that is something we should look at. Actually, I think we should be open to many changes, and I think there needs to be a conversation in policing. I think anything that improves the relationship between the sheriff's department and the public is a good thing. So I think we should be open to that change. But I also don't, I feel that we don't want to just do something just because it feels good. It needs to be something that is an actual solution. So, so, and also, I think the one thing is training. We need to make sure that our deputies are properly trained and, and so that they can carry out their jobs. So I guess I will end my comments at that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Udoman, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I think I'm good. Yeah. So I think the first thing I'd, I'd say is, if there's challenges, what have we been waiting for? The county, county board has been unchanged since 2006, and so if there's any changes that are needed to be made, I think those things need to be evaluated. The second thing I think is, we tend to have a knee-jerk response that says, if somebody brings up a complaint, that there's a problem. And I think we could look at the word "and" and say, Jason Camerud is doing a fantastic job as your elected official, and there may be some opportunities. And I think that when Jason and Ryan over at the city of Chaska took office, they did what anybody good in those offices would do. They took a step back, they evaluated, they talked to their people, and they made a judgment. And so I'm proud to say I've got a good working relationship with each of those gentlemen. And I'm also very well aware of what goes on from a perspective of a citizen having taken the citizens' sheriff academy, the 16-week training course, so I'll give a little plug for it. You get a chance to see all the facets of the sheriff's office. And one example would be, is if I'm from here, if you're watching, there's a, there's a door to the back. I have about this much time to cover the distance if I need to decide if I'm going to draw my weapon and/or shoot my weapon. And so going through a citizens' academy gives you an appreciation for what the sheriff's office and the cops do day in and day out. But let's not jump to the knee-jerk reaction that we're not doing these things, because I think we very much are. I also want to call out the efforts of Dr. Richard Scott and partnering with mental health and Jason Camerud in the sheriff's office, because there's a lot of things that are out there that are actually being done if we just take the chance to have the conversation. I know Jason and Richard would both welcome your conversations, and I know it's been very enlightening for me to have that information as I share with the rest of the community.
Thank you. Mr. Fahey, would you like me to repeat the question?
I think I'm good, Denny. Thank you.
All right.
For me, it's about educate, educate, communication, communication, enforcement, enforcement. There is room for all of us to improve, the sheriff officer and all of the deputies. With this law enforcement, with their need to service everyone with respect and dignity and to do this with honor, integrity, and pride, there's 200-plus employees that are providing public safety within Carver County. We need the security tension, we need the administration, we need the 9/11 center, we need the law enforcement, we need the emergency management, all of those will come into play. I think body cameras are a good thing, and they're going to help with the safety of not only the officers, but also our citizens. The training, we can never get enough training. Mr. Udoman had mentioned the mental health issues. They are growing within the county. And the education component will come into, to play with all those mental health issues. There's always room to improve, and education can help us with that. Thank you.
All right. Next question, Mr. Udoman, this is your choice, 5, 6, 7, or 8.
Let's go with 5. I came with a family of 5.
All right. In the Twin Cities, seven-county metro area, three counties have five board members, and four counties have seven board members. Minnesota State statute allows counties to increase board size from five to seven after the population reaches 100,000, which Carver County will most likely be after the conclusion of the 2020 census. The question is, should the county consider expanding its board? Why or why not?
I think the answer, thank you, Denny, the answer is, is I would actually favor considering three board members. One rural, one urban, and one at large. The reason for that is because in the last decade, your tax dollars have gone to $6.2 million worth of salaries of these commissioners. And by and large, you don't know what they do. Like I said at the opening comments, 3% of Carver County unofficially doesn't know who their commissioner is or what they do. And so my answer would be is absolutely not for seven, and even consider the possibility of three. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Fahey, would you like me to repeat the question?
Please, Denny.
All right. In the Twin Cities, seven-county metro area, three counties have five board members, and four counties have seven board members. Minnesota State statute allows counties to increase board size from five to seven after the population reaches 100,000, which Carver County will most likely be after the conclusion of the 2020 census. Should the county consider expanding its board? Why or why not?
I do not think the county should consider expanding the board from five to seven. I do not think the county should consider expanding the board from five to seven. I think we can control the cost. There is the expense for all of the county commissioner salaries. And I think with a board of five, it has been serving the county extremely well. Yes, we are growing. The projected growth by 2040 is estimated to be about 161,000 people. I think we can continue to serve the residents extremely well with just five commissioners. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Maluchnick, would you like me to repeat the question?
I think I have it. Thank you, Denny. So 100,000, if you understand or the history of the statute, was simply an arbitrated arbitration, an arbitrated decision number pulled out of the air. And actually, the folks, the downtown folks, again, had a little more influence over that number than, of course, us folks out here in the rural areas, or I should say, in the outer part of the suburbs. So I couldn't be more against what my opponent suggests, going from five to three, meaning that people would have less representation. I think you need to have more representation. However, moving from five to seven, the density doesn't warrant it. It wouldn't be a cost effective way of doing it. And from what I can tell, people don't have a problem with the way they're being represented. My opponent talks about same board for 14 years. Well, there's a reason for that. So the people must be satisfied with what's going on.
Thank you. Mr. Williams, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, thank you. I think at this time, I believe to go to a seven-member board with, when you hit that 100,000 threshold, I, in some respects, I see you would get more representation, but I don't think it'd be cost effective. And I think the county needs to be much bigger to warrant that seven-member board. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Williams, you have the choice for our question number seven. Would you like, just a moment here, six, seven, or eight?
Let's go eight, please.
All right. This is a direct question that was submitted. I didn't change it at all. There's been a lot of talk about us having the highest taxes in the state, but from my vantage point, I see our tax dollars going toward a high quality of life in Carver County. To that end, I ask the candidates if they believe there is waste in the county budget, and if so, what exactly do they think is a waste of money? Mr. Williams?
Okay, well, I'm going to actually agree with the question. I know we do pay a lot of tax out here, but we also have a lot of amenities. And you compare us to some other counties. We have great roads. We have great recreation opportunities here that are provided by the county. We have good services here in the county. So if you want good things, you have to pay for them. Now, with that said, there, yes, there is always places where there is waste. I don't care what kind of budget you're looking at, there's always waste. And again, like I said, with talking to people on the campaign trail, I believe the best place to start is with the employees. They know, they're there every day, 40, 50 hours a week. They know where we can save money. And I think anybody that doesn't listen to the employees is very foolish, and they're missing a great opportunity for input. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Maluchnick, would you like me to repeat this question?
No, I think I got it. Thank you, Denny. Of course, I came back a few years ago from a conference and talked about the lean program and all the things that it could do to empower the employee, or the employees to come forward and help us eliminate unnecessary processes. And we talked to some of the employees, and they said, well, we do this, but we don't know why we do it. We've just done it since I've been here. Well, how long you been here? 25 years. So, you know, we have processes that we don't need. And is there waste? Sure, there's still waste, but we've eliminated a great deal of it. But I want to talk about when people say they're, when they talk about taxes, you know, they talk about the amount. What about the effectiveness? What about an effective tax rate? You know, you look at the effective tax rate as a percentage of the market value a homeowner is paying in property taxes. It is calculated very simply by taking a home market's value and dividing it by the tax. So we know that valuations of home, you know, went down beginning in 2009 during the Great Recession. By the way, we met that challenge. And then it ended around 2013. The rising home values and the relative modest rate of tax increases by the county has resulted in decreasing effective tax rates starting in 2014 and continuing through 2020. A more logical way to look at how effective your taxes are, the term is effective tax rate. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fahy, would you like me to repeat the question?
Please.
All right. There's been a lot of talk about us having the highest taxes in the state, but from my vantage point, I see our tax dollars going toward a high quality of life in Carver County. To that end, I ask the candidates if they believe there is waste in the county budget, and if so, what exactly do they think is a waste of money?
I do agree that the taxes are high in Carver County, but the quality of life in Carver County, in my perspective, is phenomenal. It's the fastest growing county in the state. People are moving here for a reason. It's a great place to live, to raise a family, to work, to educate, to own a business, and to grow. And Carver County is a phenomenal place. We have great parks and trail systems. We have the services for many, many different types of citizens within the community. And I do think that there's opportunities to review the waste aspect. There's always, excuse me, within the county budget. And by talking to the employees, that would be a great place to start. And as a new commissioner, you would hope that we would be able to do our due diligence and look at the budget and look for opportunities to make cuts. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Udoman, would you like me to repeat the question?
Oh, we're good. Thank you. I think we have to shake the stigma of being the highest taxed county in the state. It doesn't help us attract new people here. It does not help us attract new businesses. A lot of the effort of candidates are spent docking door to door or focusing on the people that live in the houses. But there's a segment that often gets missed, and that's the business owner. And I've spent a considerable amount of time asking people. Most recently, just this weekend, it's a business owner that looks over 750 employees. It's just over the border in Hennepin County. The first question I asked this person was, would you consider relocating your business to Carver County? He said, no. And then I asked, have you ever been asked that question? And he said, no. We have people that have been living in Carver County that love the amenities of the lakes. They love the parks. They love the trails. They love the outdoors. But they haven't been approached to bring their business here. And so we have to drop that stigma. We're going to lose a lot of these business owners to come here. If you ask a business owner, if you ask a senior citizen, you ask somebody raising kids today, they will not agree that high taxes are something they're willing to pay for, especially in the child rearing age. It's not the luxury that they necessarily have. In the areas where I would focus on, number one, I'd cut commissioner salaries. The last vote of 2016 led by my opponent was to give themselves a $13,500 increase. I don't know that that was warranted, and it certainly was not something that trickled down to the frontline employees. Number two, I'd evaluate our devices and find out how many devices are sitting in a closet that aren't being used in their metaphorsing. And then finally, I would figure out a way to compare ourselves against peer counties. We are a fastest growing county, but Scott County has similar amenities. They have five employees for every 1,000 of population. We're sitting at seven employees per thousand. That needs to be evaluated. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We have time for one more question before we go to closing statements. So the sequence will be Fahy, Udoman, Williams, and Maluchnick. Here's the question, and this was brought up by several people. Development within the county is often a reason for much debate and heated discussion. Whether it is commercial or residential, development increases the taxable market base for the communities and the county. New businesses also bring new jobs and need for skilled workers. It's also likely that it reduces the land that is devoted to agriculture and farming in the county. What is your perspective on industrial and residential development that could result in a population growth by as much as 40% over the next 20 years? Mr. Fahy, your answer, please.
Thank you, Denny. I would like to see and I would support that we have the concentrated growth within the cities. The cities have the infrastructure, the sack and whack, and they can handle the growth. I think Carver County is unique in its rich agriculture heritage, and we need to continue to preserve that. I've been on the planning commission now for 11 years, and I've been a big component of the 1 per 40. I've been involved in the comp plan 2020, 2030, and 2040. And I've always been a strong component for the 1 per 40. We need to find solutions. We need to manage the change together. The development is coming. And I think with a collaborative effort with all of the cities and with the help of the county, to have that vision, to look forward, to think about the possibilities, talk about the possibilities, I think we can have some viable solutions. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Udoman, would you like me to repeat it?
No, I think we're good. Yeah, I think that when you meet, urban meets rural, there's a potential to be conflict. So why don't we work on these relationships upstream? If you drive down Highway 10 or Highway 11, you'll see my signs at a large number of farmers' houses. And when I have the conversations, one thing that often pops up is, we don't want to be taxed out, or we don't want to be assessed out. These are generational farmers that need to be respected for 150 years ago being the foundation of Carver County. And a number of these occasions, they haven't talked to their local commissioner. On a number of occasions, they feel like they haven't been heard. An example would be Marsh Lake Road, where a number of the commissioners wanted to push a four divided road through without even talking to these farmers. There's a major landowner that's on Marsh Lake Road as well, that didn't even know the commissioner until I spoke with him recently and we had an interview. I don't think those are relationships that we need to take lightly, because guess what? They were here before we were. And so if we can work upstream and build stronger relationships with the farming community, they're not idiots. They know exactly what's coming their way. And guess what? It's not all about money. It's about their family farm having been here, and there's some heritage there. So when I have conversations, I talk about what are the 100 incremental jobs that we want to have in Carver County annually that pay $60,000 or more that's non-exportable? And I focus on that to say, this is where we need to focus our energies, because the development is coming and we need to be planful. We need to work with the city of Victoria. We need to work with the city of Chaska. And we need to plan that growth, articulate it, and work cohesively with the farmers that have been here way before me, way before anybody that's on the commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Williams, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, actually, I think I'm good. You know, I think one of the things, and one of the reasons I am running for county commissioner is to balance that growth. I mean, we need to protect our farm families out there. I mean, like some of the candidates have mentioned, some of these families have been out on their farms for 150 years. And I think we need to do whatever we can to protect them. Now, that doesn't mean that there can't be any growth, but I don't want to see them squeezed out. I don't believe it's happening in Carver County, but I've seen in other counties where these farms have been squeezed out by development. And I don't think that's right. Now, if the time comes when these farmers want to sell their land and move to Florida, good for them. But I think it should be the family's choice and not somebody else's. One of the things, things I'm most proud of being on the Dalgrin Township Board, I was elected in 2008, and one of the first things we did was negotiate an exation agreement with the city of Carver. Smartest thing we ever did. Everybody knows the rules. And I think that's how we need to manage this growth. The townships need to work with the cities and work together instead of having somebody running roughshod over them. If you work together, the hard feelings go away. And that's what we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Maluchnick, would you like me to repeat the question?
I think I'm fine. I've served nine years on a planning commission. Of course, that takes care of the unincorporated part of our county. We need to let the cities do what they do, steering all development. To the cities is the right thing to do. That's where the infrastructure happens. The 1 by 40, again, is the way to go. We need to maintain our prime ag land. You know, we haven't had a food problem in this country for quite a few years, but it could happen. Now, we have a distribution problem because this nation doesn't invest in transportation infrastructure like it should, and we don't do it in the whole world. Got enough food to feed everybody, but we got to get it to them one way or another. So I just want to make sure that Carver County doesn't become a suburban, a vast suburban wasteland. That's what I want to make sure. That's been my goal since the beginning. As far as honoring our farmers, I think they know that I'm there for them. I've voted with them, I would say, just about every time. I don't know a case when I hadn't voted for them. And we support good heritage in the farms by supporting the Peterson Farm, our Norwegian heritage, and of course, the Grimm Farm with our German heritage. So, yep, Carver County's been about farming, and I hope that, and I plan to keep it always to be about farming.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen, for your responses to our questions. Now to our closing statements. First, Mr. Udoman.
Yes. I don't know that Petersons would agree with that. It's time. It's time for new perspectives. The current board has been unchanged since 2006. What the board has in longevity, it lacks in perspective. It's time to shed the stigma of being the highest taxed county in the state to help pave better outcomes for job creators, boomers, and senior citizens. It's time that the 40% of households with student-aged children are represented. It's time that we find a path for the 11% of residents living under the double poverty level to have, to make a path for the middle class. It's time our veterans not be saddled with crushing taxes. It's time for deeper partnerships and relationships based in trust. It's time we listen to what residents want and deliver solutions like growing Highway 5 congestion and promised but yet to be delivered 212 expansion. It's time for a commissioner that represents the 35% of residents new to the county in the last 15 years. It's time for a commissioner who fights harder for you, the local stakeholder that has $13,500 raise, special interests, unions, taxpayer-paid trips to DC, out-of-state campaigning, or $2 billion Hennepin County light rail efforts. It's time for 700-plus county employees that they have a culture of empowerment, and this culture supports a staff that mirrors our growing and changing population. It's time for results in actions, not words or surrogate smears, and not just in election cycle. It's time for a leader who shows up, stands up, and speaks up. And if you agree, use your vote in saying it's time for Matt Udoman for Carver County Commissioner, District 3. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Maluchnick?
Thank you. I want to thank you, Denny, for stepping up and doing this, and it's much appreciated. And Sheriff Olson, it's always good to see you, and thank you for being a timekeeper. You haven't messed up one time, and I'm really kind of proud to know you about that. So it's about experience, folks. We need decisions that are made with verifiable data and skilled critical thinking. It's not a time to go backwards. We've got to really represent the folks the way we always have here, Carver County, traditionally. And to say that a group of people aren't representative would be pretending like, well, we just showed up one day, you know, we were 60 years old. That's not true. We all raised families on the county board, pretty successfully, I may add. But it's again, once again, it's important that we have working experience, proven working experience, with the ability to put ideology aside and to work to make the two budget, next two budget cycles successful. And that is in jeopardy because of COVID. But what I want to say is that I have always been a public servant who has been about the people, of the people, and for the people, was taught to me by my grandfather, who was a public servant, a township supervisor. I respectfully ask you to vote to return me to the county board in 2021, so I can, with the help of our fine Carver County employees, keep delivering for you.
Thank you. Mr. Fahy?
Thank you, Denny and Jim, for your time this evening and coordinating the event. I'd like to summarize what I feel I can bring to the next commissioner role. Respectfully, I feel I am the most qualified candidate for District 5. The primary results were humbling and provided us with additional confidence as a top vote getter. It gave us additional momentum to continue to door knock, listen, and meet people on the campaign trail. I have served and volunteered in the county for 30-plus years, and I'm ready to continue serving. I feel I have the leadership skills, the education, the experience, along with my 17-year banking career. This foundation will allow me to hit the ground running and to be able to understand the complex budget and the many issues and challenges facing the county today. I will bring that dedication, the vision, the work ethic needed to serve in this role. I will listen, and I will carry your voice. Let's manage the change together. Please vote for John on November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
All right, thank you. Thank you, Denny and Jim, for working with us tonight. I've really enjoyed traveling around District 5, talking to people of varied backgrounds. I've met many new people. Some have lived in this county their whole lives, others have just moved here from another state. I knew I would love this part of the campaign, and I truly have. The one thing I've struggled with is self-promotion. I was raised by simple parents. Don't misunderstand me. This is a huge compliment, and I mean no disrespect for either of them. My dad was born in 1921. My mom was born in 1923. They were children of the Depression. They were humble, and they raised us kids to be humble as well. That means you don't go around telling everyone how great you are. They taught us the value of a dollar, how to work hard for that dollar, how to save our money and appreciate and take care of the things we bought with that dollar. So I've been trying to strike a balance between telling people my qualifications and not appearing arrogant at the same time. I'm just trying to be true to myself and my upbringing. Some of the other qualities my parents instilled in us are honesty, being grateful, and having integrity. They never sat us down and told us about these things. They led by example. So this is my promise to the people of Carver County, specifically District 5. If elected, you will get an honest, down-to-earth, hard-working commissioner that knows the value of a dollar. I won't be perfect, but I won't be afraid to make the tough decisions. And I will leave with gratefulness and integrity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Well, that concludes our Town Hall Forum. I would like to say, first of all, thank you to each of our candidates for agreeing to participate and participating vigorously tonight. Also, thanks to Sheriff Olson for coming out of retirement and being my time enforcement officer. Also want to say thank you to Carver County, and especially to Nick Coctave, the Assistant County Administrator, for accommodating this event at this location. And especially, I want to say thanks to you watching this live Town Hall Forum. We hope that this event has helped you as you prepare to vote for county commissioners this fall. Remember, early voting begins tomorrow in Carver County. Visit the Carver County website for instruction on early voting and absentee voting and voting on Election Day, November 3rd. Thank you, and good evening.